And it's 5:30 and we're all here, so we'll go ahead and call the select board meeting for Wednesday, April 14th, 2021 to order. And the usual reminders, this meeting is being recorded. In attendance is Amy Parsons, myself, David Phil, Jane Nevin Smith, John Woskevitz, and Joyce Chunglo. And all votes will be taken via roll call vote. And first, we'll do a select board reorganization. I know it's down on the list there, but that should be the first thing. Let's see, 6.2 on the agenda. And first, congrats to Amy on her election, and congrats to Joyce on her reelection. So-
I know. Congratulations, Amy, and welcome to the board. You all did me in numbers. I guess my constituents are dying and yours aren't. So I mean, that's how it goes, right?
We don't have four on one this year. Last year, I think there was a lot because there was like four people going for one spot. This year it was uncontested.
Well, congratulations.
Thanks.
So first order of business is we need a chair and a clerk for the select board. And then we'll also do the liaison positions next. So we need a nomination for chair first.
I'm gonna make a motion for David to be chair again this coming year. He just got his feet wet, and I think one more year, and then I would certainly like to offer it to Jane for next year.
Okay. And so need a second. Was that a yes? I can barely hear you, John.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, so motion by Joyce and a second by John. Any discussion on that?
Oh, I would like to be chair, so can I talk about it now?
Sure.
Okay. It's been my observation that the chair rotated each election cycle unless there were extenuating circumstances. It takes, every new chair takes a year to get his feet wet, but they've been in the position and they've been on the board watching what goes on. And the role of the select board is to set policy for the town. The board is guided in its meetings by the, and its decisions by the chair. The town benefits from having different leadership styles, and mine will be different from David's, and Dave, and mine will be different from the person who follows me. I have a track record of organizing and getting large projects done for the town. And I look forward to using my knowledge and skills to lead this board.
Okay. Anything else on the board?
You know, I, David, you've only been on for a year, and really, you're, me and you are up next year for election again. So this would be your, your term per se. So that's, that's why I'm kind of going with you. You've done a good job so far over the past few months here, so I'd just like to see you continue. But, so where do I really feel?
Do you want to explain why you want to stay?
Sure. I'd love, love to. So as, you know, I came into the chair position once COVID was kind of underway. And, you know, we've had the unified going with emergency management folks and, you know, Chief Spankable, Chief Mason, Border Health, Carolyn, et cetera. And so I'd just like to continue working with that group as we kind of round out COVID, hopefully, later this year. And, you know, hopefully we'll have a chance to operate normally as a board. I'd like to see eventually in-person meetings. Obviously, that's probably going to be a while out still. But we've got a lot of projects that we need to, need to finish up and a lot of things that I'd like to see through. So we're slowly, you know, we're getting there. We got the buildings done. And now I think a lot of our projects are, how do we maintain those buildings? And how do we evolve as a town as far as hiring, staffing, pay, things along those lines that we've started to dig into, but really haven't yet. So.
And again, I say, you know, you are much more likely to run for reelection than I am, given my age. And I think you'll have ample chance to be chair again. And every, every board has a huge list every year of things they do and don't do, and things that need to be accomplished and aren't finished. And I think, I think it would be better for the town to have alternatives constantly changing so that they, everything is, you know, new, new ideas get thrown in all the time from different people.
Anybody else or we vote on that?
So I'm new, so I just don't know, how has it kind of been in the past? Like, not just like the last five years, but I guess like the last, like decade or so, how does it typically go?
We have had, I'll speak to that because I've been on the board the longest. We have had chairs in the past, do two years at a time. We had John Connor. Guilford did two years. Molly did two years. So I mean, there's been a history of people doing two years at a time. And that was of the support of the board to have that happen. So that's, we have had it in the past, and I'm only going back, you know, a few, few years, maybe 10 or more, that that has happened. So it's not unusual. I was chairman of the school committee for about four or five years out of my 15. So I mean, it all depends on what the makeup of the board and the wishes of the board. So that's been what has happened throughout my career. So that's what I'm looking at. So.
All right, so.
Don't worry. If Joyce gets sick and with me at any time, I'm sure she'll make the motion to vote him out. Right, Joyce?
Oh, David and I have had conversations for sure. As I do with everybody. I mean, I don't particularly pinpoint to him, but you, you all know that I have, I'm not in a position right now that I would want the chair of the board because I have other things on my plate, as some of you know. So, you know, I just had a stress test, so I'm good with that. I want to say I'm good around. My heart's good. So you still got me for a while. I'm not going to pass out on you. But, you know, there are things that I need to get done around me. I'm going to go, be going part-time eventually, maybe next January. So this is my last stint, I'll say, as, as even on the board. So my three years being just elected, I'm going to try and get done as much as I can within the next three years. And I don't necessarily have to be chair to do that, because if you have a good working relationship with other board members, you get things done, and it doesn't have to be, we all contribute to our different parts of the organizations that we support and do. And so we're just like a team member, and I think it's worked well in the past, and I'd like to see that continue. So.
There's nothing else. Jennifer, could you roll call?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
No.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then next, we need to nominate a clerk.
Whoever would- What's the clerk do?
Takes over when the chairman is not available and does have to sign some other documents that is required of the town clerk. So if you would like that position, Jane, I'm more than happy to nominate you for that position.
That'd be fine.
I'll second. I'll let somebody else second.
Anybody on?
I'll second that.
Amy, okay. Motion by Joyce, second by Amy. Any discussion on that?
No.
All right, Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then next is-
Can we just, can we just take a minute, David, and do thank the public that did come out and vote or did absentee? I know we had a low turnout for non-contested races this, this time, but all those that did show their support and did come out to vote is certainly appreciated. You always have that right, and it can't be taken away from you. So please always extend that right to yourself that you can vote. So thank you to everybody that did come out and support their candidates that they did.
And it worked well at the senior center again. I mean, I was in and out of there in a minute, so it was great.
Yeah. Very good flow.
Do we have, Jennifer, is there the list of liaison spots?
Um, there's not a list. It, there's just a show, the, just what's on the website. And I can share that with y'all. I can pull it up and share it on the computer.
That'd be good.
Okay, hold on one second, and give me just a moment to pull it up.
While you're doing that, we can start talking if there's any preferences, any departments that people would prefer to keep or get rid of, or whatever, as far as liaisons.
I was thinking, Amy, I don't know her choices, but might be interested in doing both education and libraries, since she's the one with the youngest kids. But that's up to her.
She has any kids?
I don't have kids yet. But someday.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say you slipped something in on me this past year.
It's been kind of hard to hide. But no, uh, no kids yet. But I would be interested in the liaison to the school board.
Great.
And Jane, you, you previously had that, correct?
Right, so I thought I could do general government that Christian did.
I'd like to keep my police and fire. I have a few fires that I still need to put out, so shall we say? We still have some things that are coming in, especially with the police and the new regulations and things like that that we're working on, that's been mandated by the state. And also the fire department, which I want to do some presentation, not tonight, but ambulance and things of that nature where we, I would like to see us head within the next year to year and a half anyway. And I would like to keep rolling with that to expand on our ambulance service and things of that nature with the fire department.
Well, let's do this. If someone could make a motion for Joyce to keep the police and fire, because there's no change there, that would be good. We'll check that one off, and then we'll keep going.
I'll move the, Joyce, do police and fire liaison.
Okay. Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that one? Lots of roll calls tonight, Jennifer, sorry.
I'm in good form. I'm ready for this.
All right.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons.
Back to Amherst.
Say that again, John?
We're sending the ambulance back to Amherst. Save some money.
We're hoping to expand and make money. So far, we've made money off of our ambulance. So it's more than having to pay out to Amherst. So we'll talk about it. We'll talk about it down the road.
So that was all ayes. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Aye.
So.
I also had the master building committee, which we've kind of been dormant for a little while. And I think because of all of COVID and things of that nature, we did lose one of the chairs. David Tudren resigned for his work-related things, which was a big loss to that committee. But I think we need to get back active with that again, too. So I certainly don't mind continuing with that if we can get things reorganized and give me some names and numbers where I can see where we can get moving on, what we need to move on to. And actually getting, that could be another part of another meeting is seeing what we need to do, what our thoughts are on the select board, on what direction we want the master building committee to go, go into this coming year.
Okay. Any objections to Joyce keeping that spot?
No.
Should we vote on that one as well, probably, just to be safe?
Didn't that have a different name? Wasn't it called the-
Municipal. It's the municipal building committee.
Thank you. Master municipal. It's all the same thing, girls. M, you got an M in there. I've had a hard day. Bear with me.
Could I get a motion for Joyce to keep that, please?
I move that she keeps it.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion by Amy, second by Jane. Jennifer, roll call?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Get mine out of the way. If you don't mind, that's pretty quick, I think. I'd like to keep DPW. And then I had, well, Amy, you may want this, but I had agricultural committee. And if, if you don't want it, I'd like to keep it. But if you, if you want it, that's okay, too.
That's fine. You can keep it.
What does it do, David?
Say again?
What does the agricultural commission do?
Well, so Matt Koushai was working on getting the right to farm signs up there and raising awareness of, you know, Hadley as an agricultural committee.
Bring-
And then, oh. Oh, she's talking to someone else. And then during non-COVID times, they do events to promote agriculture. They were always involved in like the Memorial Day Parade, helping out with that, things along those lines.
Espiritus Festival and all that.
Yep.
So not, not a whole lot unfortunately since COVID, but hopefully that'll change.
David, can I just, an observation, one of the committees does not have a liaison, and that's conservation. Jennifer, Jennifer and I are reviewing the lists, and I don't know if that's not, if you don't have a liaison for that, or if that-
I think there is a liaison.
I was liaison.
I didn't know that.
Okay, sorry about that.
I didn't have it on the list. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, I, I got a couple of questions about conservation anyway now.
All right, hold on, one thing at a time.
No, 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 no. I sat through that whole meeting, and you backed out of it, and Caroline backed out of it. You're gonna listen for a couple of minutes. They, they got, they've got a little procedure problem that Caroline, we really need to notify them about the state laws through COVID and how they need to run their meetings. So and as you said, I had spoke to you about it, maybe all, refresh all the boards with what they need to do during their meetings. Would be, would be a good idea.
Yeah, we can do that. We can send out, there's definitely enough literature to walk through each committee or board on how to follow it according to the COVID regulations for doing a Zoom meeting.
Is that it, John? You good?
No, that's it for now.
Okay.
Are there other, I think Mass Municipal Association has guidelines for what each different town committee does. Maybe we should all get copies of, each committee should get a copy of what their see, the Mass Municipal Association thinks that we ought to be doing, just to make sure we're not missing something.
I, I was reading through the beacon. Do the rest of the boards get the beacon, too, or just the board of selectmen?
It's mostly the Board of Selectmen, and then some offices in Town Hall, like the Collector, the Clerk, the Treasurer, also get it.
Okay. You know, maybe that'd be a good place for them to start to keep up with, with some of the changes that's going, that are going on all the time, you know? We send it to the chairman of each board.
So we also have the committee, the capital planning committee. And I believe Christian has said that he would stay on that, correct, for this year? And we had voted on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to cover that.
Could I get a motion to, for DPW liaison agricultural for me? And then also, we can add Christian to stay on as capital committee, please.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now.
Amy had said education. Let's-
Yep.
Vote on that.
I, I just wanted to make sure that between the three of you, there is, there is quite a bit of shuffling around for the departments. So I just wanted to do those individually. Amy, you wanted the schools, and was there something else?
Um, I can do park and rec if John would allow me to do so.
Sure, right. I just got started with them, and they're just getting back in the swing of things, as you might say, with the springtime and the kids programs. But yeah, that's fine. Actually, they just sent me a, emailed me a bunch of stuff. I'll, I'll email it to you. They've got a bunch of questions that they're gonna need answered, so.
I had talked to Jim Shea, who actually called me the other day also, to let me know where they were. And Amy, I can fill you in. They're looking at using fields up in North Hadley behind the new sub-fire station. So I'll fill you in on that also.
Okay.
Could you share, if Jennifer has your number, can I get her number from you so I can share with you? And I can text you or email you?
Yes.
Is she on our town email, Jen?
Yes, Amy was added today, and y'all all got an email looping you all in together.
Okay, so I can, I can send you an email, Amy, on what Jim has said to me. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so motion to have Amy be the liaison for the school department and park and rec, please.
Still moved.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then so Jane, you want general government, and you had conservation, you said? Anything else?
Services, which is COA, so that's reasonable to keep. And now is library and human services or not?
I think, under the current list, it's separate.
Okay.
Because Christian had the library, and you had, you had cultural and human both.
Okay.
So did you want to add the library to your long list, or?
Um, I think that would be good if someone else had it, just because of-
Yeah, I mean, I-
Where we are.
Okay.
I don't think I'm gonna have any conflicts with the library, so.
All right. So John, you want the veterans and media and library?
Yeah, yeah, yes, they can contact me. You know, just because we're the liaisons, we still bring all this information back to the rest of the board, you know?
Correct.
You, Joyce, I, you know, I've been talking to Melissa and Steve and, you know, so every, as long as the communications is open through all these departments.
I think Jim actually sent you most of the materials anyway, John. He was just retouching base with me because I had touched out to him.
Okay, well, it's, it's from the Melissa, so.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll get it over to Amy, and actually, I'll send it to all of you.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
So a motion to have Jane be the liaison for general government, human and cultural services, and conservation. And then, am I forgetting anything else, Jane, or is that it?
That's it.
Okay, and then also for John to be the liaison for veterans, Hadley Media, and the library.
Still moved.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now that that's all-
We didn't give Amy enough jobs.
Oh, she needs more jobs?
No.
She's got the school and something else.
That's enough to keep her busy for a while.
Yeah, school and park and rec.
Park and rec, okay.
Yep. We can make up one for her. All right, well, if we're good with that, we'll go back, now that the reorganization's out of the way, we'll, we'll hit our consent agenda and, and move on with the regular meeting business. So I have warrants, PR 2121, AP 2141, AP 2141S, AP 2142, AP 2142S, minutes from March 31st, 2021, agricultural commission appointment for Wally Sikowski, and that's it.
It's still moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is 3.1 on the agenda, public comments, maximum of 15 minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Anybody here for public comments? Please turn on your camera or wave your hand, your digital hand, so we can see you. Last call. All right, we'll keep on moving. Well, we had a 5:45 appointment. We kind of missed that, but that's okay. Change, change of manager for the American Legion. It's 5.1 on the agenda. Jennifer, do you want to talk about that?
Absolutely. The American Legion has held elections, and they have a new manager, Richard Bukowski?
Bukowski.
Bukowski is going to be the new manager of the American Legion. I think it changes with their presidents in their elections, so they're asking for y'all to approve a change of manager for him.
Still moved.
I think it's called commander, but-
Sorry. They, they have a new commander, and he wants to be the manager of the bar, too.
But this is for A, B, C purposes, the liquor manager, right, not a-
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Is that what I have? Okay. Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Woskevitz?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
And they were entertaining. Can I just interject here for a minute? They were interje, inter, thinking about having a Memorial Day Parade this year. They haven't got the go-ahead from the Board of Health, but they were wondering and how we might support them if they did a vehicle parade where people wouldn't have to necessarily be next to one another. But even if you were marching, you could put your mask on. So that really wouldn't be quite a health issue. They are still going to have the ceremony at the Legion and raising the flag and the gun salute and of that nature, like they did last year. So I'll, I, I, John, I don't know if you or you would like me to be in contact with Richard Bukowski, who's the commander, to see where they're at with that, because we are now coming into April and not too far away from Memorial Day. So I'd like to help them out any way that we could.
Hey, Jennifer, can you give me their information, if they, he has a phone number or something that you have?
Yes.
Text it to me or something, and I can give them a call.
Okay.
Will be on giving us a COVID report later, and we could ask her about the Board of Health and the Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there, that they were looking at wanting to, you know, have some support for it. I think if it's done properly, we certainly could support it if it was, you know, masked and whatever. I mean-
Sure, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think it would be nice. It would be an elevation of- Yeah, I think it would be nice. It would be an elevation of uh spirits if we could get back into doing something, so let's let's think about it. Yep, even if it's a small one, it would be great.
So there is the Hatfield three hundred fiftieth birthday uh celebration and parade that the town has been asked to um or invited, I should say, to participate in. That's on, I forget whether it's Saturday or Sunday, Memorial Day weekend. And um I I know Chief Spankable said that that was something that that he wanted to do, and I think that's a good idea as well, since, you know, our relationship with Hatfield. Um, and I think the Legion was talking about maybe doing something on Monday. I think normally the parade's on Sunday, right?
Right.
Yeah. So maybe maybe we can do both, but either way.
So, yeah.
Say that again, John?
What, John?
I said it all depends on the weather anyway, but yeah, if if they're on separate days, it should should be hard to get them both in.
Yeah, it'll be good. I'd like to participate in Hatfield. They did in ours, so.
Yeah.
And they got the go ahead from their board health, it sounds like, so hopefully we can follow the same guidelines, so I guess we'll see.
That'll be good. Okay.
As long as we don't double book, I think that's, you know, let's not plan for the same day and if we already know what they're doing, it's a good thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh Carolyn, do you want to hit the administrative report now or do you want to wait?
No, I can do it real quick. Um, so since last week, still working on the budget, the warrant, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on when we um vote on, when you vote on the warrant. Uh, continuing to work with the finance team, looking at revenues and anticipated revenues for next year. Uh, the partial opening of the town hall continues to go really well. We're getting settled and unpacked and getting organized and I just, I want to thank uh all of the employees in the town hall who were very patient with this shuffling around and getting different furniture for um safety issues. Um, they've been extremely patient and I just want to thank them. And a special thanks to Gary Berg for his assistance. He really helped a lot with that, as well as Jennifer coordinating that. So uh the site visit for North Hadley Village Hall went very well. There were about three um interested parties and the realtor has done some additional showings privately. Um, and our new administrative assistant Stacy Sullivan uh is sharing her time between DPW and the treasurer that began this week, and um I think that's just a good example of trying to find efficient and cost-saving ways ways to assist two different departments. Um, so that's, I think that's gonna work out really well. And and just so the public knows, that non-binding question regarding the annual election date, that permanent change that did pass um at the election, so it will be on the warrant. And a reminder to the public, uh the town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, May twenty second at one P M. And if it rains uh that day, it'll be Sunday, May twenty third at the same time, so quick update. But budget time.
And is it gonna be at Hopkins Academy again?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we have uh six point one, Nexamp pilot amendment. And um I had some questions about what a pilot agreement is. It's payment in lieu of taxes. And my understanding is that for people watching, instead of the solar company paying a massive amount of taxes on their solar array right away, they get to spread the payments out more evenly over a larger number of years. So the town gets a more steady stream of revenue instead of one big chunk of money at the beginning. Is that mostly right, Carolyn?
Actually, Chris is here from Nexamp.
Okay.
He might do a good job of explaining that.
Good evening, folks. Uh, Chris Clark from Nexamp. Uh, my colleague Dale Eddy is also on, so um may call on her. Uh, depending on how hard the questions get, but a- as for your question, yeah, the the pilot, essentially what it does is it levelizes the tax liability for the project over the twenty-year life of the solar project. So for you folks, it provides uh revenue certainty. Uh, for the project owner, it provides uh certainty around tax liabilities over the lifetime of the project and uh facilitates financing of the solar project.
Okay, and so what what are you asking us to amend this evening?
Right, so Nexamp has actually three different solar projects in Hadley. Um, the the project we are speaking about tonight is the one off of Route nine uh behind the Target. It's a project uh that went live a couple of years ago. And for that project, uh we added battery or we are in the process of adding battery storage to that project. Um, we've been approved by the planning board, the conservation commission, fire chief has looked at the plans to add that storage to the project. We're going through some minor modifications now uh with those groups, uh but we are going through uh, you know, permanent financing for that project. And as part of that, we want to make sure that the battery storage is uh incorporated into the current pilot agreement, which does not mention storage, it only contemplates the solar array. So effectively, what we're looking to do is amend the pilot agreement uh with the town for that project, which actually consists of a northern array and a southern array, so it's two pilots for that single project. Uh, to increase our payment to the town annually to account for the battery. So, you know, just for background, this approach is consistent with what we have done uh in other communities where we are adding batteries to our solar projects. Um, and just for reference, under the current agreements for this project, uh for the north and south arrays, the project pays uh seven thousand dollars per megawatt per year, or about uh thirty-two thousand dollars per year. What we're proposing is an amendment that would increase that amount by one thousand dollars per megawatt per year, or the total payment on an annual basis to the town uh on the order of about forty-six hundred dollars. So that's the summary of uh what we're looking to do. This is something that we were working with David Nixon on uh before he retired and uh the new town administrator Carolyn has inherited this. Um, I would just also add for reference, uh we just entered into a similar pilot agreement with uh another town uh in central Massachusetts, a town of Douglas, uh where we amended the pilot uh to add a battery. That one was slightly smaller in terms of the amount of the increase. That was at seven hundred fifty dollars per megawatt, but you know, that's just kind of a frame of reference, I would say. Uh, you know, across the state where we're looking to do this, uh we're generally in that range of seven hundred fifty, seven hundred fifty-two thousand dollars per megawatt.
And it also has a uh annual escalation.
Two percent increase.
Okay.
So how, what's the timeline? Like, how long?
The the lifetime of the project and the lifetime of the current agreement is twenty years.
So are we adding, are we starting the twenty years when we resign it or are we going from when it started?
The amendment would be uh from this point forward.
For another tw- add of like three years or two years, whatever we are.
Out of uh, the the pilot agreement began when the project went operational. I don't know offhand that exact date, but you know, we're probably looking at eighteen to nineteen years uh under the.
May third, twenty seventeen, is that correct?
Uh, that could be right, yeah.
Um, I'd like to ask Dan what what he thinks in of this number financially for the town and um if we can.
Uh, I think it it fits in with what what they're paying other communities and what other communities are getting for this. They're adding batteries. I'm not sure what the safety aspect of it. That's something you'd probably want to talk to the fire chief on, but I think for for the town, we'd end up getting about forty-six hundred dollars, like you said, a year additional. That would go up two percent a year for the next, I think it's seventeen or eighteen years.
Sixteen years, yeah.
Yeah, so have they put that online now, that particular array or not?
The solar array is operational. The battery uh has not been constructed yet.
Okay, and are they acid batteries or is there containment for them or what what do you guys do with that?
Yeah, they're uh lithium ion li- lithium ion or lithium iron phosphate batteries typically. They're fully contained. Uh, this system has been vetted through the fire chief from a safety standpoint.
Okay, any other questions before we uh move? I get a motion to approve this, please?
So moved.
Uh, all right, I'll give uh I'll give it that one to Amy. That was kind of a tie. I gotta get a second.
I'll second then.
All right, uh second by Jane. Jennifer?
We'll call the Phil?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Waskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes, if they update Exhibit B in the attachment.
I'll do.
Doesn't say anything on it.
Oh, yeah, it's missing a missing a page, blank page. All right, well, thanks, guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, um, let's see. Let's do um let's do appointment of town collector, eight point one, Sue Glowaski. There she is.
Oh, shoot.
She she's in the shadows there, so.
Clearly, sorry.
Incognito tonight.
Only the shadow knows.
So tell us, uh, I guess, give us some backstory about how you went from elected to appointed, and this is this your first actual appointment versus uh being elected right here?
Yes, because um you couldn't appoint me while I was elected. Here I am today. You got a free day. Um. Um.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But stop, Mark. Did you hear my husband? Um, yeah, so you need to take a vote to um appoint me and actually Dan Zadonik said um they never took a vote to appoint you. Um, so I went up and said to Carolyn, hey, do I have a job tomorrow? You know? I've been hanging around for fifteen years, so uh I guess it's unanticipated.
You're hoping for some more free days before you caught on, but.
Fix the glitch.
Hurry before she leaves. So I move we appoint Susan as our collector.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Town collector.
Town collector.
Second.
So motion by Jane, second by John. And so this is uh something that started, I think, long before I joined the board and and Christian joined the board, where we were moving to a more professional town staff, where we wanted to make sure that both the treasurer and the collector had some qualifications and it just wasn't a popularity contest or it just wasn't somebody kind of, you know, wandering in from the street and taking over and not knowing what they're doing. So uh we had to vote at town meeting. We had to get special legislation done through the state legislature to make this, these two uh positions appointed rather than elected. So I think this is finally the end of the process, right?
It is.
All right. Uh, so if anybody doesn't have anything else, uh Jennifer?
We'll call the Phil?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Waskevitz?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, you.
Okay.
All right, and then we'll move on to COVID nineteen. Is uh Dr. Moser coming tonight? Does anybody know?
He's coming. I just texted her that we'd be ready for her soon.
Okay, well, then we'll skip that and we'll come back. Uh, let's do nine point one, annual report dedication and and Fred Oakley Award. Jennifer, you wanted some more nominations or some nominations?
I I would like some nominations. Um, but you know, if people could just email them to me to info@hadlyma.org. Um, I would ask that you email them to me as soon as possible. Um, the twenty eighth is your next meeting and honestly, I will be hustling like you would not believe to get a report dedicated to someone and to print at this point, but we just, we just, the nominations aren't coming. Um. Please, nominations, info@hadlyma.org.
Okay.
Can I say please enough?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right. And looks like Dr. Moser's here. Dr. Moser, do you want to give us a quick update on COVID?
Uh, sure. Hi, everybody. Um, not much new uh cases in Hampshire County are steady at uh the level that they were in the spring and the fall. Um, a lot more younger um adults, forties, fifties, thirties.
She go out.
And children.
Everybody's frozen. Everybody frozen?
No.
Hello?
Just you, Joyce.
I have that effect on people.
So Dr. Moser, while you're here, before you leave, we do have a question about Memorial Day parade and what the restraints on currently are on having that kind of gathering.
Apparently, yes, from what I understand, the parades are not uh allowed.
How is Hatfield getting theirs done, three fiftieth?
What's that?
How is Hatfield able to do their three fiftieth parade on Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah, I I I, you know, I don't know. I will um, I'll ask, I'll be on a state meeting on Friday and I will ask them again.
That would be great. If we could follow some guidelines, if, you know, where people aren't going to be on top of one another, but just, you know, doing what we need to do, just for some type of celebration after the year we had. I mean, thank you for asking. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I will definitely inquire.
Not not so much people involved, but uh like the fire trucks and police vehicles and empty cars and stuff like that, more of a drive to through type thing and everybody stick around their cars if they parked on the side of the roads.
You know, that that sounds reasonable to me. Um, and uh, you know, people kind of stay apart on the side of the road, but, you know, I don't make the rules. Let me uh, let let me check with the state and uh I I will get back to you.
Who else will ask the question about bands? Because we have a band that loves to play.
Uh, they're in close proximity and they're blowing their horns and stuff, so I'm not sure about that one.
Music is allowed outdoors, but the musicians have to be uh distanced from one another.
Yeah.
So um.
Let us know what you can find out.
I will. I will. I'll ask about uh all of those things.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
No. Sounds good. We're all working towards getting better at this, right, and getting done with it.
Well, getting done with it would be great, but sadly, we're not near there yet, but.
Nope.
Um, all right, I will uh, I'll ask the state and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, night, everybody.
All right, good night. Okay, we'll keep moving on. Uh, let's do Amy's here, uh FY twenty-two budget update. Amy, do you want to talk about uh what the finance committee's been doing?
So uh we met with um, let's see, we met with uh HR, we met with uh council on aging, uh library and um park and rec. Um, we have two more um scheduled. The rest of ours are scheduled for next week. Um, I um would like a little guidance from the select board, if you could, on what you're looking for. Um, you know, just what your thoughts are. Um, you saw Dan's Dan's um a chart and it was, can you give me some guidance on, are we? Because if we go with level service, we're going all the way to the end. And I just want to know, you know, really, what's what's the um wishes of the select board?
I think what we're really looking for is anything that's way out of line.
Any feedback from the select board on on, you know, are you really, do you want us to really focus on the level service? Are you looking for us to do more? Um, you know, because you don't where that chart is.
Your connection's a little.
Okay. I don't think we're going to find anything way out of line, because we really were tight the last time. So I don't see things way out of line at all. I just. Oh, it's not great. Yeah, sorry about that. So. Well, we'll get back to you next week, then, in the next Select Board meeting.
Okay.
So, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. It's just you're frozen, and there's a big delay in your audio.
And maybe we can, as a Select Board.
Can you hear me all? No?
No. Can we look?
If Amy will turn off her camera, she will get better reception, and we might be able to understand her a little bit more clearly.
Is that a little bit better?
Yeah.
It is. Oh, that works then. Okay, good. Hey, I like that better anyways. So I just wanted to know where the Select Board, because if we get it all ready, and then we present, and the Select Board really rather wanted us at a different, we're thinking a little bit differently than we were. I just wanted to have an idea where you were coming from before, you know, while we're going through this.
I'd like the Select Board, you know, at our next meeting prior to the Finance Committee, to take a look at that chart that Dan did. It's very detailed, and I think we should pick what we would like to bring forward for this, you know, coming year, and what we could do for taxes, and what would be feasible and good for the people. So I'd like to propose that we take a look at that and come back before the, before their scheduled time on, and we have a discussion on what we would like to present or have go forward with that.
Will there be any new information about sources of income in the next couple of weeks?
What kind of income?
That would be any kind that we could find. Anything that would add to the amount the town has to use to meet its obligations.
So we're going to continue, every few weeks, we get more updates on what the revenue's going to be. So, you know, with each week, we have a better idea, and so we can continue to update the Finance Committee.
And is that looking better? Is income increasing, or is it lower, or what kind of thing are you seeing?
You know, Susan and Linda can help with that, but I think we're doing fine.
Yeah, we've just, we have just finished with the March revenues. So we need to take a look at this as an internal financial management team. But it's, it just happened. So, I mean, you know, we had town hall pulled apart for a couple of weeks, so. But I think we are going to be in good shape. And I can tell you, from collection standpoint, I normally have a dozen or more payment plans now. I have one. I have one this year. And I went and looked through and kind of was like, ooh, are they not contacting me? They're paid. And I had run into a couple of people who are our usual payment plan people, who are saying to me, you know, I got, I got the stimulus stuff, and I've been taking time to take a look at how I do budgeting and that type of thing, and it's working out. So just wanted to throw that out there. But Linda has her revenues in. My collections are right on target.
That's, that's good to hear at this time, you know.
It really is.
Yeah, yeah, excellent.
We, we do have the figures submitted to accountant for revenues, and it's just a matter, any, any day now, we'll be getting that report back, and then be able to update those graphs. And I don't think, because of the timing here, I don't think you meet for a couple of weeks. I think we should get those reports out to you by email as soon as we're done. So as soon as we're done with them. So you'll see where we stand year-to-date through March, which is actually the full third quarter. But we know, I think we told you last time, when February was looking a little weak, that we had some really big ones outstanding, like the Five Colleges Collection that we have on the PV, on the PVTA system. That did come in. We got the 205,000 in March, and and the motor vehicle was the other one that was, that wasn't coming in yet, and Susan's.
And we are right on target with that.
Those came in well. So we're looking forward to that impact on March. Besides that, there, we did have an increase in the. I don't, I'm still not sure. What do we call it? The state payment on the marijuana.
The cannabis excise.
There you go.
The drug, the drug payment.
It's out of my area entirely. I don't even know what it is. So, but yes, that payment did go up for this past quarter. We knew that it would, because we only got, we received the first quarterly payment on that three months ago, but we were concerned that it was not for a full quarter, that it maybe was only for two or three months. So that went up by $10,000 in a quarter. So we're looking forward to, once we get the March revenues, that we then reincorporate that into our FY22 projections. And then, then we still have outstanding issues, which I think it's still, still a good idea to plan around and wait until we have some better information on how the, the ARPA funding is. So we do have some outstanding monies that will be coming in to help. It's not intended as a substitute for raising your own money. I'll tell you that. So we do have to do our part, and, 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 you know, there's a judgment call there, and something we can talk about later when we're, when you're at that point of having a full discussion on the taxes. That's something where we hope to bring in some more specific information, so that you are well-guided in making sure you don't cut below a point where you're jeopardizing federal funding into our, into supporting Hadley. If we don't support ourselves, they won't help either. It's not meant to be a substitute for taxes, for example. So how exactly does that fit in? I'm not saying it's all or not. We need to figure that out. And I think over the next few weeks, Jane, you specifically asked us, there are more information we'll have over, as the weeks go by. Every week, we should have better information. So I do hope, you know, that we just get through the rest of these Finance Committee hearings and find out what a good budget is, and that we then figure out how we put those pieces together, whether, what kind of gap we still feel we have at that point, and then, then you enter with your final decisions as to whether we're going to find a way to fund that, use the taxes, or do something else with the budget. But I think making those kinds of large decisions at this point, I feel, is premature.
So what did, what did we do with the French Street monies we've got for sale of that property?
We've, we have put it in as the part that was not actually payment of taxes. It has just gone to, will go to free cash. And it was, well, I think we considered at that point that it was kind of a tidy offset to what we had, what we were not getting in, with a shortfall in the ambulance rebate. So it kind of was an offset for that. It's not the big, you know, under other times, like, you know, two years ago, with that kind of a capital influx, we would have set it aside for capital purposes. But right now, we're just getting through. And it wasn't that large an amount that is going to make that big a difference, whether we use it for operating or.
Right. Can you, can you break down what the taxes were, or what the money was? Do you have that in front of you or not right now?
I don't have it in front of me, but it's actually in the, in the that revenues report, because it was in through December. Tell you what, when I send out the March revenues report, I will break that down. My guess is something, it was, I think it was something like low, you know, 20-something to high teens difference. But let me get the right figures. I hate guessing, especially.
No, no, that's okay. Just, just.
I really like to get my figures right, so.
You always do. I'm just asking out of curiosity.
I always get in trouble when I guess. So, yes, I will specifically, when we get the March revenues, year-to-date reports out to you and the Finance Committee, I'll specifically address that in the email, okay, Joyce?
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
So last year, I know Jennifer prepared a beautiful, you know, ring binder with all the budget stuff, and that happened this year, and if so, when?
Happy to address that. That's why I called. The report that you got is what I call a budget book light, that it was not the, it's not the, all the extensive verbiage that David put in at the full explanation. So for going forward, because that was something that David created, and he enjoyed doing, and he put a lot of time into it. And we're trying to, you know, figure out the best way to use our time. That would actually be a production of taking each of those individual budgets that you have in your 27-page report, and taking them and lifting them and substituting into, into the, into that, I don't know how many, like, 100-and-something-page book of his, and then updating each of the paragraphs. What we think what might be a better, better use of, and matches our interests and our abilities, is to take David's book and make, make, the explanation sections really won't change that much from year to year. So he has a full section on explaining OPEB. We'll have that section there, and we'll have all the other explanations that he always included there, what each department is for, what their, you know, their game, their goals, and their functions, and all that. We'll keep all of that the same, and then have a front section, which will be the equivalent of what you just received. Here's, here's 27 pages of our updated, our revenues, our expenditures, our budgets, and have that in the front, so that we're not doing a complete rewrite every year. So we think that's, you know, a good use of paper, energy, time, and also gives you an ability to focus right on that front section, on the figures, and when you know, you know, when you need a little more explanation, you can flip back to that. So I would like to get to that. I don't think you're going to, you're not going to get it in the next couple of weeks. I'm sorry, but it is something that I do, I do. I did value that work that he did. There was just not a way that we could pull that off in this time. And then we began to think of whether we really want to do it that way anyways.
Thank you.
So I know town hall's not going to be happy with me saying this. Carolyn probably knows what I'm going to say, but I'm not going to support a 6%, and we don't need to vote on it. We can wait till more information comes in. But I'm not going to support a 6% increase just because we can, and we haven't charged residents in the last few years. Prop 2.5 exists for a reason. And in my mind, there should be no reason that we increase taxes on the residents more than 2.5% in a year. Just because we can, it's not the right thing to be doing to the taxpayers. And I understand that the chart shows, well, it's only a few dollars here and there, but, you know, everything's going up, gas, everything else. So we don't need to just pile on because we can. So I appreciate what the Finance Committee is doing, taking a hard look at things. But, you know, if we're going to give guidance, I would say, my guidance would be, don't look at the 6% column on that chart. It's, you're never going to get that vote from me. That's just the way it is. So, and I know you don't want to hear it, but that's, it makes your job harder, but that's just how it is.
I had asked, and we haven't done it. I mean, I, I know where I stand on it, and I've said it a couple of times already, you know. I'm looking at the level of funding, and probably 2% or 2.5%. You know, people were pretty happy having a little bit of ease in the rest of their bills with this COVID situation we're in, and we're nowhere near out of it right now. Some people are really still struggling pretty bad.
Did we mention that ARPA funding is $1.5 million? And I really caution you and be careful how you speak at this point. We do not want to jeopardize $1.5 million because we didn't do our share in the taxes. I'm not saying that we have to raise it that full amount. I'm saying we need to know what that means. If we're not supposed to use federal funding to offset real estate tax increases, we need to know what that means, and be very, very careful with how we vote on this. That's why I'm saying it's premature at this point, and I would really like to see you just hang on for a few weeks while we get these pieces put together.
And that's okay. But what I have a problem with, Linda, is when Dan comes on here and says something like, well, we can charge 6 and something percent just because we need to catch up. That was the word that came out of his mouth at the time. And then I understand that town hall staff is advocating for a certain perspective, but I'm going to be the bad guy here, and I'm going to say that's not what the taxpayers want to hear. So I'll let the facts come out, and we'll work it out. But you got to understand that the town hall perspective is not the only perspective.
But you do want all the information, is what I would really advise.
Exactly.
And I think with capital aside, we really attacked our most crucial points here right now with the Water and Sewer Department. We've got major infrastructure issues that we need to pay for, and they're in the millions of dollars, not just a little bit that we've produced with the $40 fee and the water fees and the sewer fees. So, you know, that federal money, there's a lot of it coming down the road. I gave it to Caroline. They've got a five-year infrastructure program that, if they're going to give it to everybody, we really need to get a couple of these bigger projects in the works, and not really shovel-ready, but at least, you know, look at what we need underground here. You know, the sewer was built in 1964. The water was built in 1904. You know, this, there's some major work that needs to be done still. We've upgraded a lot of the water system, but our newest water system, really, if you think about it, is 76, when they put the water line in and the water tanks on the south side of town and connected everything together.
Yeah, I think when we're talking about tax increases, you really have to look at the whole picture. So we're not just looking at property taxes. We're looking at water and sewer and increasing. And with what Mr. Okafor has put forward, and what we need to do for water and sewer, you know, these are things that we need to take into consider and seriously think about how much each household basically can afford increases in water and sewer and their taxes alone. So it's really a combination of not just one tax base. We have other things that we increase also throughout the time. So let's all look at the total picture, not just one thing or the other.
Yeah, you know, and David and the departments have been working on more of a regional look at the water sewer also. You know, Amers wants to get involved with our water, because they need the water, and they're also looking into our sewer, to treat our sewer. You know, and it could be a good, long regional outlook, a 20-year outlook for both of our towns, you know.
Yeah, we need to do that sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
It's.
That's major.
It's a painstakingly slow process, unfortunately, when the town government moves slow enough. But when you put two towns' governments in there, it moves 10 times slower, unfortunately.
Until somebody else desperately needs it, and that's the other ones on the other end of the nine, Route 9, so.
Exactly.
When something really needs to be pushed and shoved, we'll hear about it. Yeah.
You know, I think it's a real good opportunity for us, being the smaller town. I think we can benefit on both sides of this. And I also agree that Amers can benefit on both sides of this also, you know.
Yeah, we can. Absolutely.
So we'll put it on the agenda next, next, the 28th. And if we have the revenue reports, if you want to email them out to the board in the meantime, that'd be good. And we'll have a, we'll make sure we save a space for a good, long discussion on the 28th, I think it is.
How can we afford to give water to Amers if we have water bans in the summer, because we're pumping to a certain percentage?
So we have the water, Jane, but to put another treatment plant up at Mount Warner, where the other two wells is, is quite an investment. It's probably going to be a $10 million investment. But if we sell the water to Amers for X amount per gallon, you know, it'll, it'll pay for itself in a long one. And, and that's a major capital expenditure.
How long?
About a police cruiser or anything like this. About a police cruiser or anything like this, you know? This is twenty years on the road.
Our water license allows us to take, uh, and don't quote me, but it's like seven hundred fifty thousand gallons a day out of the ground uh, at the Callahan Wells. Um, so the reason that we have the water restrictions is to make sure we stay under that cap. At some points last summer, we were at like one point two million gallons a day, way over the limit. You know, state will only let that slip for so long before they start, you know, putting restrictions. So.
Before we add the iron and and the problems at Mount Warner, uh, each one of those pumps could pump a million gallons a day.
And so if we bring Mount Warner back online, which we've been slowly working to towards, we could add basically another million gallons a day onto our capacity, which would erase our water restriction problems and give us plenty that we could possibly sell to another adjoining town. So residents could water all they want and then.
More residents, yeah, exactly.
But we also, we did get money and grants for the station down on Bay Road. Uh, there was some monies that came through, which were very beneficial. And hopefully, like John was saying, with some federal money coming around or whatever, these would, this would be the time to put out our wish list to uh, the senators and the House of Representatives of what we need uh, for our infrastructures and to get our applications in um, for these things too. So it's something that we need, we really need to stay on top of of getting in there and making sure we get our applications in.
Yeah, I I brought all that information. Caroline, have you looked into that uh, that federal plan of what what the justice of that is or?
So there's a lot of stuff that's coming down the road. There's, it's probably too complicated or too timely to go into it now. There's a lot of factors that impact many of those things that are coming through. Um, and I can get some of that information ready for you for the next meeting. But it is, I I don't know how else to say it. It's much harder for Hadley in its in its position right now than competing with other communities like Holyoke and Springfield. Um, and I can outline that for you and I've been working a lot with the engineers, with Chris and with some of the, with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. But I've also been working with the legislator staff. So um, I've already reached out to um, our federal legislator, or two local ones to talk specifically about. You you know that that's my focus right now is the water and sewer pipes for Route Nine. Um, so that's what I, that's a critical issue right now that I'm working on. There are a lot of them. Honestly, it's very hard for me to be the expert to know what, you know, what exactly all of these projects are gonna be. So I, we will have to rely on outsized consultants to look at some of that information. Um, but I can, I feel like I do need to present to you some of the challenges of why we haven't gotten grants and the reasons why. Um, and I'm willing to do that. It might not be in the next couple of weeks because we're working on that budget, but I think there's some helpful information for the board to have that can explain um, some of the challenges that Chris has had um, as well as um, some of the grants that we haven't gotten in the past and why.
Because we're too rich and we're not like Springfield and Holyoke.
There you go.
So.
Well, again, I'm gonna say it. We we'd rather raise the taxes, make the taxpayer pay a little bit more for a million and a half dollars than get grant funding for a ten-million-dollar water treatment plant. Is this what you're telling me, my financial team? Yeah, come on, you got your finger up soon. Let's hear it.
Okay, so what I'm telling you is, a lot of these grants go to um, certain income-level municipalities. There are so many different aspects of this, John, that, okay, so uh, our tax rate is twelve dollars. And I'm quite certain when our grants hit the desk, they go, twelve dollars, let them charge more. Sorry, that's how it works.
And some of the key issues are, is we, you you have to have a project construction ready. So you have to have the engineers in place with their, ready to go out to construction. We don't have that. That's what's hard and that is something I was going, that we may be placing on the warrant to get some of this, these engineering documents done by the consultants. But that will cost money. And so many of these projects are not bid-ready.
And and Amherst has helped us a little bit with some of the issues that we have. But as I said, if we have a regional thing between Amherst and Hadley and some kind of an agreement, maybe they'd look at it a little different if two communities went into this together. This is what I'm trying to say.
And we actually had a meeting today about it, but as David said, it moves very slowly. So it, you may not be seeing it on the front line, but it's happening behind the scenes. Um, but like David said, it is slow, but we actually had a meeting on that today.
Okay.
So uh, we'll make sure that this is on the agenda for the twenty-eighth and we'll leave plenty of time so we can talk all about budget and uh, give some better guidance on things for the Finance Committee. Um, and then we'll wait on the grants, I think, until after town meeting because I know we're real busy with the budgets and town meeting anyways. So we probably don't have the the bandwidth to take on the grant writing at the same time. Unless you think otherwise, Caroline, that's something that could be done before.
Grant writing for these projects?
Yeah, what I'm saying is uh, we don't need to have the grant discussion now because we need to focus on town meeting, I think, and the the budget instead of the the grant issues, right?
Yes, and there's very, we don't have a lot because you usually do your um, capital uh, projects in this uh, fall. But we do have, we do have especially the Route Nine one. But again, there's multiple grants. So multiple, there's not just one. Um, so that, again, is part of, you don't have, you don't have that one professional that is able to look at all of those grants who understands all of those capital, those are capital, our infrastructure issues. So it's more than just looking at one grant and trying to write a grant before, you know, within a certain timeline. There's so many other issues um, that impact that.
So I don't know enough about this, but is there, is there such thing as, um, I know you can hire professional grant writers and things like that. Is there like a uh, grant headhunter type position where they get a percentage of grants that they win for us? Something that would encourage them to actually, you know, pursue these and and something that we could arrange so that way that, I I don't know. I mean, how do you ha- find somebody that's motivated to start winning these for the town?
Typically, it's difficult to get one grant writer to do a whole array of different um, infrastructures. Or I'm sorry, different projects because there's infrastructure. There's so many other um, grants that are available to help a municipality. There could be an IT grant. There could be, um, you know, uh, to look at efficiencies or things like that. So there definitely are consultants out there, but they will cost money. You have to pay for those consultants. Um, most of them um, will help write the grant, knowing that they're gonna get a portion of it. But you still have to have some upfront costs and you have to identify. I think that part of what you have with your goals and objectives tonight is to look. I I think you need, the the board needs to prioritize what area in Hadley needs to get focused on as far as capital expenses and funding. And that's how you would start to pursue a grant writer. I can tell you though, just watching all of the the emails that come in from other communities, everybody's struggling to find that that person. It's it's not very easy in municipal government, with municipal, municipal focus.
Have we, have we tapped UMass at all for anybody doing their thesis or doctorate or anything on that that um, is looking to expand on the horizons for uh, government?
A lot of the engineering firms, some of the engineering firms specifically do water, specifically do sewer, specifically do conservation, you know?
Yeah, I've been meeting with them, John.
They're all, they're all specialties. They're not general grant writing.
Uh, John, I I asked a question about UMass, if there was anybody available over there.
Usually a student who's doing their thesis already has something in mind. And if it's not specific to a need for Hadley or any community, it can be very difficult. I've, I have reached out throughout my career and worked with interns. Honestly, in many cases, unless you have a complete, you're in line with the same project that that student is, it is a ton of extra work for the employees. So we really have to be that perfect match.
Ly- Linda, you were waiting to say something?
Uh, PVPC is a possibility. They do um, some grant writing. And I don't know what the uh, basis is. I don't know how they charge or, you know, whether it's a percentage or the, whether it's flat application. I was just checking with Bill. They had them do a grant for uh, Planning Board uh, for a while ago. So um, that kind of a service, and I don't know what there might be through the counties.
Working with Pioneer Valley. Yep, and I am getting some free service from them. But we would, because we already pay Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to help with Planning Board. They also help with some projects with Chris, but we reach our max. And so anything in addition, we would have to, we would have to pay for, which we can do, but you'd still have to pay for those services. But and I'm already working on two projects with them.
Right. I I think they, as opposed to someone that you just hired to uh, to do grants, because they do so much of it, I think they'd have a good sense of whether we really had um, a shot at a grant before they put in the effort and put in the application. That's why I'd like, I like the idea of dealing with someone who really um, has a, has a good idea of the entire field. So, yeah, I mean, that's just another possibility.
Okay. Well, we'll save, we'll save plenty of time next meeting to talk about the budget and then we'll uh, have a budget, a grant conversation down the road as well. So. Amy, you had anything?
No, thank you for your input on all that. I appreciate it.
Okay. Sue, did you have something else? No? Oh, okay. All right. Anything else on budgets before we move on? Okay. Uh, last item I have is goals and objectives. So I put a list on there and for the people that aren't uh, on board docs, I have the sale of North Hadley Village Hall, actually finishing that. Um, the transfer station contract, because there's a lot of unhappiness with the current transfer station arrangement. So finding a, a better solution. The landfill solar project that we voted on two or three years ago, I believe, to authorize for an RFP to get that out there. So hopefully we can generate some revenue for the town. And I have a Russell School decision and so we can stop kicking that down the road. Uh, Goodwin remodel, remodeling process or progress. Um, I know the Municipal Building Committee, this is, this is the, all for Joyce right here. Uh, Municipal Building Committee had some plans and and uh, the architect is working on it. But what do we need to do so we can start actually moving forward on that? Uh, building maintenance plans for contractors. We have three new buildings. How do we take care of them? How do we maintain them? Do we need to hire contractors? Uh, you know, service plans. I know the Senior Center was looking at service plans or service contracts for maintaining equipment. Uh, we need to finish that. Finishing some capital projects. One of the bad habits we've had for quite some time is we carry over a lot of capital money in accounts for multiple years. So for the most part, I'd like to make it a goal that we have a clean slate at the end of the year. So everything is, is, you know, a- as much as possible, we finish the pro, the contracts or the, the projects that we start in a particular of the year and we're not carrying this funds for, these funds from year to year. And the last thing is a legal contract. I think we need to look at better, cheaper options for law firms. We pay, I don't know. Caroline, do you have any idea how much money we pay in a, so far in the year to?
Uh, we're averaging, a, a bad month is about four thousand, a good month is about twenty-five, two thousand five hundred. And I've seen, we had one month when it was nor, during the North Hadley Village Hall that was close to five thousand.
So it's a lot of money. So I'd like to look at some better options for law, law firms or legal services and maybe something that provides a little better customer service aspect as well. So this is not, you know, an all-encompassing, encompassing list. So if you have other opt, options, other items you would like to add to that list, throw them out there.
You want them now?
Yeah, if you just have some, I mean, we can keep adding to them, but I just, these are some kind of things that we're hanging around. So if you have anything else you wanna add on to there?
I do. I want to, for us to look at our ambulance service. Our contract is gonna be coming up. And I also would like us to try to initiate uh, a BL, BLS ambulance, which would be just be a standard, it's not an ALS, uh, paramedic ambulance that we use for uh, critical things. But sometimes uh, we're in a position where we could uh, be able to uh, operate and earn money from just a BLS ambulance. So that would be something that I would like to also put on the agenda. Uh, we've talked about it over the years. I think I have been on an ambulance committee since I was on school committee. Um, so with, these are things that we have been kicking around for over thirty years. Um, we're at the point now where at least we have an ambulance that is in our bay uh, and able to do a quick response um, to our residents. Um, that has worked out really well. Um, but then we'd like to move it a little bit more forward. So um, I'd like that on the agenda for us to uh, complete this year and and look into more.
Okay, we'll add it to the list. Anybody else have anything else?
Well, like I said, concentrate a little bit more on on our infrastructure, you know, with the water and sewer. Uh, along with uh, a regional thing with Amherst, which we're, which would just be continuing, you know? And see where we're at with it. I don't know. I I know it's been over a year now that we've been dealing with them, so. It's, it's not a fast process, any of these things, so.
Yeah, it's uh, what we're, what I'm finding is that the form of government in Amherst is very different than Hadley, where there's only five of us and we have pretty open conversations. Uh, their town council is just extremely slow in in getting business done. There's a long process to get something in front of the, in front of the town council. So it's, it's, it's tough. So.
I think one of the things also, I know we finished our projects, um, the three buildings, but we also only have a year, uh, from my remembrance of doing other buildings in town. We have a year to complete our punch list and make sure that everything is covered. And I wanna make sure that we come under our warranty uh, with everything that has been put into the building. So I would like everybody on their buildings um, to be aware of this and make sure that um, we keep an eye out for anything that needs to be checked, redone. Um, making sure everything is where it is. So I'll be talking to Mike about North Hadley because there was a couple of things I had questions on. Um, I don't know if Jane, you have anything on your building or if the library does?
The library and the Senior Center are both waiting for the RFP to go out on solar. That's a big piece of both of our buildings, especially the library that gets a hundred thousand dollars back when they get that completed. And the same that the Senior Center will have in the long term for the town is worthwhile doing it. So we need to get the RFPs out.
Do you know if, do you know if it's only going to cost a hundred thousand dollars on the Senior Center? I mean, I'm sorry, on the uh, library?
I have no idea. We haven't put out RFPs to see anything. We're waiting for that. And, you know, we can't close off those budgets into, because both buildings are saying this is part of our budget and we need to do it.
Okay.
I, I think that the last time the library talked with us was was uh, their, that was ma- matching funds or or a portion of the funds for theirs, that hundred thousand?
The hundred thousand dollars was going to be partial payment for theirs, yes.
No, that's what I thought.
But it also, um, they have, when you have a building that's certified, energy efficient, you pay more to have it designed that way and certified, just like an organic farmer pays more to grow the same things that somebody next door could use the same uh, methods. But to have that formal uh, designation, it costs money, which is one of the reasons the Senior Center has a very efficient building, but didn't pay the extra money.
We didn't either at the North Hadley Hall, but we turned our money into uh, making sure that there is uh, uh, which, what's the word I wanna use, everybody? My mind is going blank. Fiber optics through all of our. Fiber optics through all of our town buildings, so that we're all on the same page. So, we spent our money on, um, all the other buildings, the senior center, library, school, town hall, and our other, uh, building on East Street, just to make sure we're all on fiber optic and which benefited the whole town. So, that's what we did with our extra money.
All right, anything else for this list? I got the, the solar and ambulance. Yeah, okay, um, we s- I skipped over, we need to close the warrant, so if I could get a motion to close the warrant, please.
Motion to close the warrant?
Oh, are we gonna talk about the list that was on board docs today of the order of articles and what they are?
That is what I did, uh, Jane, if that's okay, David, if I can just address that. Um, that is a list of the articles that are on the warrant. There's no explanation of it right now. We still, we still have to work on all of the wording, and I have to get more information for, um, certain articles. So, I wanted to just show you that this, that is the list of how many articles and what's on it. And, um, to you, it didn't come out in highlight, but the first twelve articles are the, I'm sorry, the first ten articles are the ones that we, uh, wanted to put from, uh, the fall, I'm sorry. Yeah, the fall town meeting that didn't get addressed.
Yeah, they were coming first this time.
They're, they're on first.
Correct.
With all the programs that are out there, are we still doing that rental thing or not?
That's on the agenda for us to talk about. That's one of the, that's one of the, uh, articles.
All the state programs out there right now.
I think we need more, I think we need more information on it, and we can address that, I think, at the next meeting, don't you?
Yep, we can, we can talk about that at the next meeting, um, but as far as the, the warrant goes, I think, Joyce, did you say motion to close?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, second by John. Jennifer?
Roll call that Phil, Phil?
Yes.
Sorry, roll call that Phil?
Yes.
One more time, I'm so sorry, roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
So sorry, Chungalo?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
Miss Gavitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and Amy, uh, in the chat, uh, a couple of things to follow up on real quick before I move on. Uh, money for a study to redo the DPW, that is still on the books, that hasn't been done yet, correct, Caroline? That's?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that also needs to be done. Um, what else did you say, Amy? Uh, oh, the employee study, the wage study. My understanding is that wage study was not very good, that we had not very useful. So, I know that there's an internal group working on some solutions, right, Carol? Okay, so, we we kind of have to re-accomplish that, it looks like, unfortunately. All right, anything else? We have executive session, two of them tonight, so before we do that, any announcements tonight?
I don't, I'll have to do them at the end of the month.
Anybody else? Up, Sue?
Uh, demands for excise bills that were due April first are going out tomorrow. So, if you haven't paid your excise yet, uh, get it in the Dropbox tomorrow by noon.
All right. Any other announcements? All right, so we have an executive session, uh, first one is contract negotiations for the Human Resources Director and contract negotiations, Police Union, DPW Union. Let's see, so I gotta read both of these, I believe, to be official. So, the select board will enter into executive sessions per MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-two, to conduct, uh, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Human Resources Director. And then I'll read this other one, the select board will enter into executive session per the provisions of MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so declares Police Union, DPW Union. Uh, so could I have a motion, please, to enter executive session?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Uh, as Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded to enter into executive session. And, uh, I state that discussing the matters in open session will have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley, and we will not reconvene in open session. Roll call vote.
Roll call Bill, Phil?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
Miss Gavitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.